We're doing Alison Wonderland Junior this year. We have a cast of about, we have a cast of about thirty-four. That includes, we have thirty-four students participating. We have about twenty-five in the cast and nine in our stage crew. This year is our first year. We have a student director, Connor, who is a junior here. Asked us if he could step into that role. So it's our first year for us doing that. And he's been a great addition. And I have known Connor for, since he was little. And I can see his leadership skills really coming out. So that's kind of cool for me to see that. I don't know if you want to say anything?
You've said everything that I was going to say.
The show is April sixth and seventh. This year, we're actually doing a two o'clock matinee performance on Saturday. The sixth on the Friday will be a seven. Saturday will be two, two o'clock. So, and tickets will be on sale at the door for five dollars. That's about it. This is our cast. Thank you for allowing us to come and...
We're going to see you all on the show.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck. Good luck.
Next, I'd just like to acknowledge the camera crew for filming our meetings and Mrs. Johnson for taking care of our minutes. And now we can move on to the highlight on schools, which is the middle school Summit Learning Pilot.
So, I'm pleased to introduce Melanie Amicetti. Melanie is our grade six ELA teacher. She's in her first year with us at the Middle High School. And she will be presenting an overview of our Summit Learning platform, which is blended learning and a computer-based curriculum. And I'm going to help her with her slides. She's going to talk and you both can answer questions that we have.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm sorry if I haven't received... Hopefully everyone can see me.
Jason, will your microphone reach?
Or do I keep that from me? No worries.
You might be able to sit here.
Sit? Oh, yes. Yeah, I don't need to be gesturing or anything.
That be okay with you guys?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's a very smart idea.
Mr. Corney, you working the slides or?
Yeah.
Okay, good, sure.
So I can just give you a wave or tell you my stuff?
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So is this okay? Never used one of these things before. Here, hands.
Okay. So hello, I'm Melanie Amicetti. I am the English Language Arts teacher on the sixth grade team. It's my first year at WB and I'm thrilled to be a part of the community. It's been such a great experience so far. So, I want to thank all of you for giving me that opportunity. And I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about the Summit Learning Pilot Program that we're doing in the sixth grade. So it's an ELA curriculum. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what Summit is and kind of their philosophy. And then I'll talk to you more about the English curriculum specifically and what that's looking like in our sixth grade classrooms. So Summit actually started as a chain of schools on the West Coast. And so, over the years, they kind of started expanding and offering their program studies to other schools to adopt. So, as of this year, they have three hundred and thirty schools participating with about fifty-eight thousand students in forty states. In most schools, the Summit curriculum is across all of the content areas, so across the core content areas. But at WB this year, we're just piloting in English Language Arts. And they have, their program is centered around these three pillars that you can see on your slides. They are mentorship, real-world projects, and individualized learning. And so I'm going to talk about those three pillars that they have this evening and what those look like in my English Language Arts classroom. So on the next slide, just going to kind of give an overview of the curriculum that I'm teaching this year. And so the curriculum that we have is aligned to the Common Core ELA standards for grade six. So it covers the five strands: writing, reading for information, reading for literature, speaking and listening, and writing. And the standards can be revisited throughout the year. So, for example, at this point in the year, we've visited selecting evidence, the skill-selecting evidence, which aligns to RL1 and RI1 three times already. So what's kind of cool about the way the program collects data is you can see how a student is performing on a given standard over multiple assessments. And you actually can see how they're performing on the standard rather than having to look at a project grade and go back and think, "Okay, why did they get that grade? Was it because they didn't have a well-structured paragraph? Or was it because they didn't choose appropriate evidence?" So that's kind of a neat part of this platform. Another part of the Summit program is that they really believe in this competency-based progression idea. So that comes in with the personalized learning part of the course. So students don't move on to the next skill set until they've mastered the previous one. So that means that at any given time, different students within a class can be at different points within a course and they move ahead when they're ready to move ahead. And so they can get support that they need to master a skill. We can move to the next slide. So the next slide talks a little bit about the units that we've completed this year so far. So this year so far, we've done a great debate unit in which students studied argumentative writing and debated topics of their choice. We've also done an elements of fiction unit where they reviewed the elements of a story and represented the structure of a story in a unique way. So some people read roller coasters or mountains, things like that. Then we did a stories and storyboards unit where we read the book holes. And we focused on developing active reading skills. So things like inferencing, making connections, response to literature, identifying theme. And then we just finished up a unit on exploring poetry. And so, in that, students were able to self-select poems that they analyzed for theme, point of view, word choice, and things like that. We just moved on to our next unit, which is memoir of a student. So they're reading the book, "I Am Malala", and they're going to be writing a memoir of their own. So we just started that this week. And then at the end of the year, they're going to be doing "Living the Good Life", in which they look at both fiction stories and nonfiction. And they have to answer the research question, "What makes a good life?" And so they kind of integrate nonfiction and fiction sources in that. So, the personalized part of the course is referred to as focus areas. And so in the personalized learning part of the course, it happens every Monday. And students progress through content at their own pace. So they have the opportunity to take a pre-test on a given skill. And then they can select resources that are appropriate to their learning style or that interest them or that maybe suits their learning style. I already said that. But they can choose resources to help them learn new information. When they're ready to assess, they request a content assessment, which we would think of as kind of like a quiz to show what they know. And they request that when they're ready to take it. They need an eight out of ten score to pass on to the next focus area. And that accounts for about thirty percent of their grade under Summit's model. So we work on the personalized learning part of the course on Mondays and also once a month during mentoring time, which I'll explain in just a moment. So that's kind of the craziest part, I guess, of the Summit Learning or the part that departs the most from like a traditional classroom. And so, I've shown you an example of a focus area up on, or up on the slides here. So the focus areas align with different standards that we have in sixth grade ELA. So the one that we're going to look at tonight is a point-of-view focus area. So this is a focus area where students were learning about the different types of point-of-view and how to identify point-of-view. And so I've just kind of taken a sample student and removed their information, but just to kind of let you see what they see when they log on to Summit. So you can go ahead and click, Mr. Corney, and then... So that's the unit, or the focus area we're going to be looking at. And so when you pull up a focus area, you see a couple of things. You'll see the title of the focus area at the top. And then immediately below that, you see the box that says diagnostic. That's where students start. So they'll take a pre-test on whatever skill they are covering to kind of see what they already know on the skill. Then, to the right, they can also see the skills and key terms that they'll be learning in that unit. So for this one, for example, the key terms are things like first person, second person, third person limited, third person omniscience. Mr. Corney, if you click through a little bit, it'll just point out those areas. And then if you click through to the next slide, it'll show you the rest of the focus area. Under the focus area, there are different objectives that the students are learning. And attached to each objective, there are the resources that they'll use to independently learn that information. So they might have a video clip or a worksheet to complete. They might have a resource that they're taking notes on. And we go over a lot of note-taking skills and strategies together as a group. Okay? On the right-hand side, you can also see students that are able to help. So these are students that have already mastered this focus area and can act kind of as tutors to guide other students, which is actually a new feature and one that's kind of exciting to think about how that will play out as time goes on. And then at the very bottom of the focus area, once they've moved through all of the objectives, they can request their content assessment. And so at that point, they would take a quiz. They would put their notes away. And if they score an eight out of ten, they're ready to move on to the next focus area. If they don't score an eight out of ten, they have to revisit the concept. And maybe that involves a workshop with a teacher. Maybe that involves getting some guided notes, things like that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
On the diagnostic area?
Yeah.
Is there any way to, I guess, skip forward if they already?
So, so that's an option that I don't allow them to, or this year, I didn't allow them to do in the beginning of the year. But as the year progressed, if they are assessing, you know, pretty high on that diagnostic, I encourage them to go to the check for understandings, which is supposed to be kind of like your last review step before you take a content assessment, just to make sure that it wasn't a fluke that they scored that highly on the diagnostic. So it does kind of allow those students that are ready to fly high and may have some pretty strong skills in ELA to kind of challenge themselves and move ahead at their own pace, while other students that may take a little bit more time have the opportunity to do that. So that part of the course is really something kind of neat that it differentiates itself. It allows students to work at their own pace. I'll move on to talking about the projects, which is going to sound a lot more familiar to a traditional classroom. So the one difference with the Summit program is that when we grade the students, they're graded using cognitive skills rubric that Summit's developed. So it's actually the same thirty-six skills that carry on from year to year to year. So hypothetically, if a student went to the Summit School from grade four to grade twelve, they'd be assessed on those same skills. They'd just be building from year to year. These projects are backwards-designed projects. They're intended to be kind of real-world projects. And they have a series of checkpoints that lead students to be prepared to complete the final project. And that's worth about seventy percent of the grade. So we'll look at an example project page. And this was for the project that we just finished, which is exploring poetry. And we can go ahead and click ahead to the project page. And so anytime the student logs on to do some work on the project page, they'll see this main drop screen. On the main drop screen, they will always see the project overview that reviews a description of the project, the essential questions, and the enduring understanding. So they can always see where they're headed at the end of the project. They'll also always see at the top the final products for that project. So for the poetry project, the students did a final poem analysis on a poem that was new to them. They created a portfolio of poems that they wrote. And they wrote an author statement in which they had to choose evidence from the poem and explain it, explain how it supported a theme. And they had an open-mic presentation where they shared their work with their peers. Also on the project page, you'll see all those checkpoints, which are the steps that build students towards completing the project. You'll see the cognitive skills that are aligned to the Common Core standards so that the teacher can know instantly what standards are kind of being reviewed in this project. And you'll also see the focus areas that support the student project work. So you can see which focus area students have already completed that have helped them to prepare for this. You can also see the attached activities that come with a checkpoint. And those are always available to students. So if they need to go back and access notes or access a worksheet, they can always do that. It's kind of nice to have almost a digital folder available there for the students. And the last piece of the Summit, the last pillar that they talk about is mentoring. And so in Summit Schools, mentoring happens weekly. At WB, where we are only having this in ELA, we try to do mentoring monthly. And during mentoring time, students meet with a mentor. So this is a variety of the sixth grade teachers. We set aside some time to have these mentoring sessions. And during these sessions, they get to meet with the teacher to set long-term goals, to look at their progress through the curriculum, to talk about how they're doing in their other classes and, you know, outside of school even, and to also adjust their goals if they're finding that they're not meeting them. This next slide doesn't really affect us in the way that Summit is set up at WB right now. But this is Summit's grading platform. So students' grades are calculated on the platform. This year, I've had to try and convert those grades to put them into School Brains, which is what I find most students and parents are using to check their progress. So that's been a little bit challenging. But this is kind of playing out rhythm that they have within their system. So their grade is continuously updated on Summit, whereas my grades in School Brains are a little less fluid. It doesn't necessarily self-adjust like Summit's platform does. And in order to pass the course, students need to complete all focus areas and all projects. If they fail a focus area or have a late project, their grade shifts to an incomplete until they're able to turn that in. I just have a few more features I want to show you and then I will stop talking your ear off and you can ask any questions that you have. So when they go to their week view, they can also set goals within the platform and check them off when they're completed. And the mentors also have access to these goals when they check in with the students. Some students prefer to set their goals on paper, but it's nice to have that option to do it right in Summit. When they look at their year view, they have what's called the blue line. And the students kind of dread the blue line, but I think also kind of enjoy it because the blue line shows them where they should be in the year. And if they fall behind that blue line, they know that they need to seek extra help or attend a workshop to get themselves caught up. And if they're ahead of the blue line, they feel a little bit proud of themselves. Like, "Hey, I'm working hard and I've kind of got ahead here." So that's kind of a cool motivator for some students. And then on their progress page, they can keep track of their goals and feedback from advisors. They can also see who their mentor is and see their current grade in Summit's platform. And those are the features that Summit has. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have. I know that it's a lot of information and a lot of it was new to me and mind-blowing to me when I first started this pilot program. So I can only imagine how many questions you might have for me just throwing it all at you in ten minutes. So...
Well, initially, I'll go to the most recent slide.
Sure.
The blue line. So that shows where you should be today. What indicates where you are?
That's a great question. So, units or focus areas light up green when they've been completed and they have a check mark next to them. So you can see that this student is actually two focus areas ahead
Oh, okay.
in her power focus. But she hasn't started any, or he hasn't started any additional focus areas. So that might be my next advice to that student in particular would be, "Hey, why don't you jump down and take on some additional focus areas because you're pretty far ahead of the blue line?" Focus areas or projects will turn yellow or red if they're late or if the student is falling behind. So that too can be a good motivator and a good visual indicator to the kids to say, "Hey, you know, you need to see Mrs. Amicetti for some extra help or, you know, stay after school and kind of get caught up on an assignment."
And this is all online?
This is all online.
So when they're doing a review of a book that they're reading or a chapter that they're reading, they're typing all this?
Um, yes and no.
Is it like Google Docs? Where they're typing it and submitting it to you?
Yeah, so all of the documents that are delivered through Summit are delivered through the Google Drive. That doesn't mean that everything that we're doing is on the computer. Because that was, I guess, my biggest question when I first started doing this pilot. I was asking, you know, are the kids going to be on the computer every minute of every class period? The answer is no. So we do still have a good deal of paper-based assignments as well that just the grades are entered through Summit. Or the activities that are attached to them are available through Summit. But they do do, do most of their work, not most of their work, but they do a good deal of their work on the computer through Google Drive. Summit is fully integrated into their Google accounts. So all of those documents on Summit are also in their Google Drive. They get immediately pushed out to the student.
One of the things that I enjoy seeing is how Melanie's been able to blend a traditional, you know, sixth grade English class with this technology. And there are days when the kids are very independent and very focused. And then there are days when the screens are down and they're reading and having a discussion about poetry or short stories like you would see in a traditional English class. And she's really brought that balance. And for the first year that we've had the program and for Melanie being in her first year in our district, it's been about as seamless as I could have ever imagined. And the feedback from the students has been positive. And I think the feedback from the parents has been positive as well. And we're trying to assess, you know, as we head into the second half of the year, you know, we expect that this will have a positive impact on our standardized testing. And I guess the proof will be in our, in those outcomes.
Just listening to it, it sounds very Californian to me.
Well, it started in the West Coast, right?
It just sounds, I mean, they're influxing the technology. It reminds me of a computer program. It's like everything's a computer program and this is how the kid's going to learn going forward. It's not get a book, read the book, and then write an essay on the book. It's got to be involved with technology. I think the life is just dramatically changing.
You have to know the person who pitched it to us and told us that the format was developed by the same people who made Facebook. And to Chris and I, when we heard the pitch about it, you know, you know that we started with our sixth grade scores and English scores particularly. We believe that part of the reason that the scores may have been suppressed somewhat was that we weren't actually completely aligned to the curriculum a hundred percent every step of the way, walk step, walk step. This program, we were absolutely positive, would guarantee that you stay compliant to the curriculum because it actually tracks that. You know, so we know kids are following this, developing the skills that are in the curriculum and we can actually see it. If their light turns green over there, we know they mastered that skill or they can demonstrate that skill.
So you're plugging in the curriculum?
It is, well, we didn't have to because this one is aligned to Massachusetts, the Common Core curriculum for ELA. So, but it's exactly the curriculum that Melanie would be teaching no matter what materials she was using. It would be this curriculum.
These are the expectations.
But this is, this is well-aligned to it and it's paced to finish the whole thing. So you can't, as a teacher, make the choice to stay doing something for four weeks that really should have only been given a week in the curriculum. This forces you onward.
Well, I would think it forces you onward for the kids that can get it and are ahead of the game.
Right.
But the kids that are struggling, it doesn't automatically force it because they got to go over it again and over it again.
Right.
But it seems to help identify who they are and...
One thing that I enjoy about the personalized part of the course is that you can quickly see the students who aren't mastering a skill and pull a workshop. Whereas, you know, in a traditional classroom, you may cover a standard and you may cover a concept and you may assess students on it. And, you know, if you have to move on, there may be students that still aren't quite there and unfortunately, you're moving on to the next unit. But at least with the personalized chunk of the course, which, again, is only one day a week. But that personalized part of the course does help teachers to identify the students that are struggling and can pull them aside and work with them. And it also kind of forces students to revisit skills that maybe they would have just moved along to the, oop, I'm sorry, moved along to the next one.
How do you choose mentors and where do they come from?
Yeah.
We have to be creative with the mentoring because we don't have this in all of the sixth grade subjects.
Right.
So we use all of the sixth grade features as part of that, plus the sixth grade specialists, the teachers that have those students outside of the team area.
So it's not a student?
No, no. It's teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, it's teachers.
That, I couldn't figure out.
No, the only aspect that students would be helping other students was in that little check section, students able to help, yeah. But the mentoring is done by teachers. So the teachers can log on. They can see how the students are doing in the course. And we pull them aside. We have a chat with them about how they're doing, what they're working on right now, how they think they're keeping up. It's a good opportunity for the mentor to see, "Hey, you're behind the blue line, like, what's going on?" It's also a great time for them, for us to check in and say, "How's science class doing? How's math class doing? How's social studies class doing?" So again, it's only once a month. It's not a huge chunk of time. But it is, it is kind of a neat opportunity that's built into this kind of program model, I guess.
It'd be a good fit for a team. A team concept where you, as a team of teachers, share those sixty-five kids. And then you split them up and you have these little seminars with them. You know, it really does help the kids to get to know these, their teachers, and the teachers to get to know the kids. And sometimes outside of their subject area. You know, Mr. Walker's learning about what a student is doing in English class and how that relates to, you know, their other subjects. It puts them all as a team focusing on that student as an all-around learner, which is really possible.
I mean, based on your experience, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Based on your experience so far, are you thinking of implementing this further?
I think we're at a wait-and-see on that. We want to get data.
Okay.
I mean, I think if...
When you said team, I thought it sounded like that was a...
Melanie loves it and she wants to continue teaching with it. We would certainly have her do that, support her to do that. As far as expanding it, I think we want to see the actual data. So we're going to look at the data that is generated through Summit as far as which students mastered all their standards and which have some gaps. And we're going to actually do a comparison with their end-cast data when we get it, see if it really is a good predictor. Because one of the reasons we also wanted it was to ask ourselves a question. Is there any tool that can help us predict who will be successful on their end-of-the-year exam? And if this works as a predictor, who they, you know, do well on their end-of-the-year exam, then we certainly want to be using it because that's how you can develop interventions to prevent this from all of your gaps. So I think that's yet to be decided. We'll probably have another...
One of the worst... So at the very beginning of the year, you said students set their goals, right? Or they, they...
They're setting goals throughout the year, yeah, absolutely. So like, they'll set kind of shorter-term goals and long-term goals. So like, at the beginning of the term, we'll talk about, you know, "What's your long-term goal for the term?" And that can actually be related to anything. But their short-term goals are, you know, "I want to master my next focus area within the next two weeks." And then they'll actually set up an action plan. "What are the steps I'm going to take to do that? I'm going to create flashcards on Tuesday. I'm going to, you know, review a worksheet on Friday. I'm going to write one of the steps that they're going to take to accomplish that."
So now, for a student who, how can I put this, might not be as motivated as some of the other students, how, what type of assistance are they given to construct these goals? Because I can kind of envision the students just kind of, you know, in a status quo, not even really not gonna do it, but I wanna do good.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's like, so what type of goals are they setting?
Sure. So at the beginning of the year, we actually, there is a lesson in the PLT section of the course, which is that personal learning section of the course, about setting SMART goals and, and, you know, making sure they're specific, making sure they're measured, that full acronym, right? And we talk about, we kind of brainstorm together, like, what would a strong goal look like, right? Because just saying that I want to do well in ELA, well, that's not going, that's not measurable, that, how do you know that you've met that? Right? So usually, those goals take on the form of something very concrete and specific, like, I want to finish a focus area by this date, or I want to do three poems in my poetry portfolio instead of, I'm sorry, do four poems in my poetry portfolio instead of poetry. So we focus a lot on that. But, I mean, certainly, I think that would be like an in-the-moment kind of coaching situation with that student, yeah.
Interesting. I really, I really hope that it does work out, and you do see a correlation for our MCAS marks increasing to sixth grade, and if that's the case, then it's all worth it.
You know I do. So, I made a lot of notes.
Sure.
So it says, you said initially, 330 schools, 40 states, 58,000 students. So are, did we kind of look, and maybe you know this a little better, did we kind of look at who was using it, how they were using it, what grades were using it, and make a decision about how that looked and how it would work for us? And what's the cost associated with it?
So we've had this program for a free this year. We were, the program is trying to launch more places around Massachusetts, especially they're targeting schools in Massachusetts that are level three and four middle schools. And they needed some people in Massachusetts to do it, to show that it would work here with our students, with our standards. And we were asked by the person who's running the program if we would basically pilot it this year. His original pitch was for pilot for all of the subjects for one grade, and we didn't feel like we could do that. We felt like our sixth grade was strong in every way except English, and so we thought for English, no harm, no foul, I mean, we were gonna...
Change some things, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all. We don't know what the cost would be going forward, and, but we're, we're gonna create as much as we can, and as much as we want.
And one of the things that I've said in the beginning was, is we know we've hired an excellent teacher, and my investment is in Melanie. And whatever tools we provide her with, whether it's Summit, or whether we take Google and we look at Google Classroom and do some of the Summit things with it, she's doing a fantastic job. And the team in general really come together and rallied around this new technology. And I think the technological literacy on the whole team has improved. The kids are using Chromebooks in all their, in all their classes, so it's been exciting to see. And I definitely feel as if we have really had a really solid year so far.
I just have, so I have another question from Mrs. Immacchetti then. So this seems to me, and I know we're under some sort of, I don't want to say restraint, but it is restraint with respect to Common Core and Strands, and it's very much kind of dictated to what we need to do in the classroom as far as content. But this, to me, seems like it's almost more than that, and do you, as a teacher, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but, do you like having it this compartmentalized? Or do you feel like you don't have as much freedom in the classroom? Do you feel like maybe this is too much in a mix of something like this, and allowing teachers to have some of their own influence is better? Because I, I think we needed a change, for sure, but I just, I wanted to kind of see if you would speak to that at all.
Thank you, yeah. You know, I think that the technology has, and the program in general, has its pros and cons. Like, on the one hand, it does keep teachers and students on track. We know it is aligned to the Common Core. And the projects, the way that they're designed, they're engaging projects, like, you know, publishing your own poems or writing your own memoir, those products are really kind of interesting. I have been trying to supplement the program with some skills that I think the students need to work on that might not be so real-world. So, you know, adding in a bit more literary analysis, adding in more, you know, open-response style writing, or, or things like that, that do show up in the curriculum, but I think they could use more of. So this year, the challenge for me has been figuring out, how do I blend what Summit's created with what we need for our students here? And so figuring out, you know, in the Summit model, they wouldn't have traditional quizzes and tests, but I've added those on because I think preparing for quizzes and tests is an important student-aim skill. And, you know, covering some of the skills that show up in personalized learning also in my classroom with direct instruction, just to make sure that, you know, kids that maybe aren't there yet covering it on a personalized, during the personalized learning time, are still getting that instruction in a timely fashion. So I think the largest challenge for me this year with the pilot program has been figuring out, how do I blend what our students need and also the skill sets that I already have with what Summit's created? And sometimes those match up really great, and sometimes it is hard to make them mesh together. And so I, I think, you know, moving forward and, you know, where I'm at in the year right now, I feel like I have a lot of tools to figure out and pick and choose. The beginning of the year, you know, it was kind of a learning process, figuring out, how do I balance what they have laid out so clearly, they have such a clear vision, and how am I tweaking that to fit our students? So what you're picking up is not incorrect? It's kind of figuring out, okay, how do we work with that now? Does that, does that answer your question?
It does.
I don't know if it does.
No, it does, definitely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm gonna add one more. So the person who coaches us through this program did tell us that there is the capacity within the program to add your own units. So you can design your own unit, put in your own text, put in your own articles, or worksheets, or whatever you want kids to do, so you could do that. I would say that wouldn't be a great thing to do when you're trying to fit them.
No, definitely not.
But as we move forward, if there were things that seem too precious not to have, we could definitely put those into their model and make the same, it would still, it would embed it within the, what the student has to do, within part of what they have to do to get up there with the model. It makes a difference a lot.
And is that looking at where the students fall? Is that something that parents have access to as well? Because I know, I had a sixth grader last year, and one of the things that I did a lot was I wore school brains, because I think the adjustment sometimes from fifth grade to sixth grade is, they have a little more freedom, so the social life starts to take over, and academics start to be forgotten a little bit. So I know, and we've all, as a school committee, had conversations about going on to school brains and making sure that we're up on what kids are doing, so that we can work and partner with teachers to make sure our kids are where they want to be. So do parents have access to that particular...
So they have access to their students' information through their students' account. That being said, I've found that students mostly rely, I'm sorry, parents mostly rely on school brains because that's where all of their other courses are posting information. So I've had to kind of take the grades and tweak how they're inputted.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
So it's not matching the Summit algorithm precisely, but trying to kind of do it the best that I can. But I would say the majority of my parents use school brains and not Summit to be checking their child's progress. So it seems like, right now, it's more of a student tool and a teacher tool to check progress, and that's, parents are more, just due to sheer ease of use, they're going on school brains because, well, that's where the other six classes their child is in are.
And that's what they're used to, probably, from moving through the grades. If your whole school was set up through Summit, and that was how you communicated student progress...
Right, right.
That would be your norm.
That would be your go-to.
Our norm is school brains, and everyone looks at that, and that's, you know, probably gonna continue.
Yep.
We need to get them to do the school brains, never mind the...
Well, I look forward to seeing how the year goes, and thank you very much, because I know this is probably a lot of work as far as, you know, implementing all of this. And three of us have incoming sixth graders.
Oh, great.
So, don't, no pressure.
I hear these three are...
Myself, Mr. Pedoni, and Mr. Ponticelli. So we look forward to working with you next year.
Great.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
That's a great work, thanks.
Well, I only have one question. How do you bring in homework into this thing? Seems like everything's focused on being classroom, but you can bring in homework as well in your program?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I assign reading homework, or I'll do a worksheet that's practicing a skill we're doing in class. So, like I said, I am supplementing their curriculum quite a bit. I'm not just following precisely the activities that they've laid out, and so, but homework does tend to look a little bit different, just because, I mean, I've always found English homework looks a little different than math or science classes, right? Where you're kind of practicing, sometimes it'll be reading, sometimes it'll be vocab, so it kind of changes.
Are they submitting that on, through the, through the program, or is this...
Not the homework, usually, no.
Homework's hard copy?
Yeah, usually, or a reading, or something like that.
So it sounds like if you just followed the Summit program, you wouldn't have homework.
Um, in their true model, that could be the case, yeah. And, and in their true model, it could be the case that, you know, that, like I said, the quizzes and tests, like, they don't really have a quiz-and-test-based school in these true Summit schools. They, they really focus on, they really harp on this idea of the project time, and those real-world projects. So that's kind of their model, and I guess we're tweaking it to fit WB, so, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Schopper, how many other schools in the area are using this program? Are we...
We're it.
We're it?
We, we are it. We think maybe at least one other middle school, potentially two other middle schools next year. They're in negotiations right now, figuring that out.
Have they tried getting it into any of the districts like Lawrence or Holyoke that are in, like, receivership that are...
Actually, no, I should have told you that. Actually, Holyoke has used it.
Okay.
So it is in Holyoke, in a full middle school, one grade, a full middle school in here. So there's two of us, sorry. But they're trying to get some other, besides Holyoke, they're trying to get some other schools. But they, they are looking for a level three or four middle schools, and there's a few feelers out now for those schools.
Did you have...
Can I just chime in too? I believe that, I want to say, I can look into this, but I want to say Framingham is also doing a partial implementation with maybe one or two subject areas. But I can get back to, and Chris with that, and bring that along.
But not like Worcester County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, interesting. It'll be interesting to see.
It will.
All right, next we'll move on to community input. Seeing that there's none, we'll go to vote to approve the 2018-2019 school year calendar. Can I get a motion?
We have the calendar. It's right after your minutes for tonight, and I'm just asking for your vote on this calendar tonight.
Any differences?
I think there is a difference, right? If I can just, real quick, so, January, I noticed that there's a Teacher in Service Day on Friday, the 18th, and then there's the Martin Luther King Day on the 21st.
Yes, so the Teacher in Service Day is really a set day in January because it's the semester transition. So it has to happen on, very close to the 90th day of school. And that happens to be the direct hit on the 90th day of school.
Yep.
And we are not unhappy that that allows families to have a little bit of an extra vacation day, long weekend, yeah.
It's, it's the way it was this year.
No, this year it fell. Monday was the holiday.
Yeah, but we had that Friday off.
We, oh, we always have the Friday off, always, yeah.
Well, it didn't result in a four-day weekend.
No, it, Monday was the previous, and then we, yes.
Frankly, I think it made it more challenging.
No, this is nice, sir, and Columbus Day weekend.
I think it's, way should be.
Columbus Day weekend is a long weekend for families too, which is nice.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2018-2019 school year calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I, thank you very much.
Also, those are, Dr. Schopper, those are built-in snow days at the end of the year.
They are, yes. The state requires that we schedule 180 days plus five additional days for snow days.
But just to be clear, if we went over, we would still do 180?
Yes.
Or under, we would take back some?
Yes. We can have, we can have school days in the 2018-19 school year that can last until the 30th of June.
20.
Right, 28.
Right, exactly. Next, we have some warrants to approve. We have the payables warrant for February 5th and February 19th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the payable warrant for February 5th and February 19th.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is to approve payroll warrants for January 26, 2018, and February 9, 2018. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve payroll warrants dated January 26, 2018, and February 9, 2018.
Can I get a second?
I'll second up.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll move on to subcommittee reports, starting with the Policy Subcommittee.
So we're just doing the first reading of the A, B, and C policies that were brought forward last month, with changes that were recommended by MASC, correct, additions and/or deletions.
Anything I noticed, there was a, was there a couple additional policies added?
Yes, any of the policies that have at the end, that don't have a voted-on date at the end, those are new policies that were recommended over the past, sometimes 10 or 11 years, in this case, by the Massachusetts Association of School Schools. And most of those just coincide with new laws or new regulations to help keep your policy booklet in line with the regulations that the State Department of Education has put forward.
Sure. Can I get a motion to approve policies A, B, and C for a first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve policies A, B, and C as a first reading. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a Budget and Capital Planning update.
The budget and capital planning met this evening, and we had a nice spirited debate and learned a lot about our current budget. And it's still in the works, so the numbers are still fluid, and it's going well. The numbers look good, and it's just a matter of hearing from the town about what our, what our numbers will look like ultimately, so, and the state.
And then I, we would have a public hearing on the 14th of March, I believe, right? At 6:15?
That's correct.
And the building part of it, the capital part of it, really is not significantly report there.
Right. Any questions? Okay, we can move on to Communications Reports, starting with Mr. Maher.
I'm here in the midst of Spirit Week at Major Edwards. I'd like to, once again, thank Denise LeBeck and Lindsay Morris for coordinating this week's activities. We'd love to re-date today. I know Dr. Schopper and myself read two grades, two and four, this morning. I'd like to also thank Sharon Bokankiewicz for coordinating the author visit for Jared, Jarrett Crozescu, who's an acclaimed illustrator and author, who's visiting the building on Friday. There are an array of grade-level events ongoing throughout the day. He has something prepared for each grade specifically, which is nice to see. We also, I'd like to, again, congratulate our three fifth-grade students, Jillian Armstrong, Isabelle Rossi, and Owen Khan. I mentioned last meeting that they had proposed a clothing drive for families relocating to Worcester from Hurricane Maria after ravages, ravages Puerto Rico recently. So they've really done a nice job. They've been very poised in how they handled themselves. Their public speaking skills have grown exceptionally, and I think they've impressed themselves. They made the rounds through all the classrooms in the building during the first week, talking about their, their goal for, and what drove them to coordinate the event. And I know they were fearful about speaking in front of their own peer group in grade five, and they were thrilled that grade five, they had rap audience there, so it was nice to see.
Nice.
So we're piling everything up, and Central South America, Americas will receive all the goods next week. So congratulations to them. And tomorrow evening, we have our Curriculum Evenings for Grade 1 and 2 at the building from 6 to 7, and Grade 4 will host an energy fair in the gym also from 6 to 7. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Folio?
Oh, thank you. This past week, we had our Grade 7 through 12 Science Fair. We had 88 student exhibits and projects that were on display with judges from faculty and members of the community. It was very successful. Mrs. Howard and Mr. Shaw did a really great job with the middle school science teachers, also having students submit projects. The same night, we had our grade five parents in to talk about the grade six curriculum. They got to hear from the grade six teachers and take a tour of the building. It was a very well-attended and successful evening. Some congratulations go out. Ashley Smith, grade 11, surpassed the 1,000-point milestone in basketball and helped the girls' foster team qualify for the playoffs. Grade eight student Colin Ryder participated in the Project 351 Service Day, along with Ms. Solano and Ms. Spencer in Boston. Our seniors are in the process of filling out scholarship applications, which will be turned into our guidance counselor after the February break. And middle school students recently enjoyed a winter ball, which was a semi-formal dance, which was very well-attended, organized by Ms. Fodos and the Middle School Student Council. We have a blood drive on Friday, coordinated by the Red Cross and the High School Student Council. Council. And we were notified this afternoon by NEASC, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, that our most recent report, our progress report, was accepted, and we are being moved forward on the accreditation calendar for a reevaluation in the year 2021. So, we're in good shape, and we'll begin the application process for the next round of NEASC evaluation, which will be in the fall of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trina?
Thank you. I know, he's cringing at me.
No worries.
I'd just like to inform you, Dr. Shoppa and I actually had pleasure spending some time with the state a few weeks ago to be informed of our next program review, which we feel like it's a never-ending cycle, but the Department of Education has decided to change the program review, and it's now called a tiered focus review, which will be a three-year cycle. And I'm lucky, we have been chosen for the next group to begin this review. So, we, our first year, we'll be looking at pretty much, it'll be documents and procedures. What they have done, if some of you live around, recall, we have, every six years have a big review, which is called the Coordinated Program Review, which looks at special education, civil rights, and English language learners, and that. And then the three-year mark, we do a mid-cycle, which is kind of just an update. And then three years, we go to the Coordinated Program Review. They now have revamped this to a tiered focus review, that every three years, you're on a different tier, tier one, two, and three, and depending on that year, they're gonna be looking at different areas. So, instead of doing a huge comprehensive thing every six years, you're gonna be on a three-year cycle. So, we'll be on tier one next, actually, we have to submit by September. The deadline was June, luckily we got an extension, thanks to Dr. Shoppa for September, to do our document review. And we'll be looking at special education and civil rights for our documents. So, we'll have all of our documents uploaded to them that they require by September. They'll review that, and they'll come out for an onsite visit again sometime next year, specifically to look at our facilities. It'll be the first year. And then when we hit the second tier, it will be looking more at student files and other areas, and then the third tier is another area. So, they're spreading it out, but it's still a comprehensive, just, you know, every year now, it's gonna be some sort of, I mean, the only, I say good thing about it, that if we're in good standings in certain areas, that we will get exempt from having maybe a site visit or something like that. But we're not gonna know that until we start going through the process. So, just wanted to let you know that we will be starting that again, and it will be out sometime next year, look at our facilities, and do some interviews with parents, staff, and members of our special education. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Pompel?
Just a reminder, one of the payables warrants, they have new signatures because they're not on it, that's a new, that's a new warrant for this evening. I apologize, you just got your expenditure reports this evening, but if there's any questions on it, I'll let you answer them. As you can tell, play our available balance, okay, year-to-date, this is through January. We're holding a strong financial position, where no unexpected expenditures have come forth yet, so we're doing good on that end of it. Couple of negatives in there, those negatives will be corrected by the encumbrance amount in there, there shouldn't be, the, two of them that I looked at, not to make any adjustments on it yet, but the amount should've come out of the encumbrance expenditure, and it didn't. So, it didn't hit that for whatever reason, we'll have to go back and put it through there. The only true negative one in there would be the maintenance of buildings, which historically, we've run that course before because we are doing some extensive things to our buildings here, as you know. Other than that, I'd gladly have to answer any questions on that. Any questions? Great, thank you. You're welcome. Dr. Shoppa?
Let me just follow up on Mrs. Trina's comments about the new tiered focus review. So, they changed the name. What, in actuality, has happened for us is that the review that we're now gonna have three years after the first one is far more extensive than it would have been if they had the previous one. So, and I'd like to just point out from the beginning, because I think it's important they understand what we manage in our office, this review is done at every single district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it is the same exact report, the same exact amount of documents that you have to put forward regardless of your size. So, in a district that has, you know, 50 people in their central office are doing the same amount of work for us that Sheri and I do. So, it's a very burdensome activity, and now it's going to be a burdensome activity every three years rather than every six years with only a tiny touch after three years. So, you know, we always ask on this committee, what can we do to advocate for small schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? One thing would be, you know, something in line with the People's Reduction Act, or eliminating redundancies in recording, and we don't seem to have that right now, and it is a little bit disappointing. I was disappointed to have this drive to us this year, I have to tell you, because it takes away, you know, as I, the reason that we got the extension, I explained to the State Department of Education, you know, we've set a full agenda for our time in our school department. We set that in August, the August retreat, we put forward a plan for the year. That's a full plan. When you get notified in December that you now have to add a whole other set of things onto it, it just doesn't fit. They believed me, and gave us an extension until September to get the documents together. But it is a lot, and I just want to recognize Sheri, because she does do the lion's share of it, and it is quite a burden. But we'll keep you informed, and as always, we'll keep you understanding the political stuff around it, and, you know, how we deal with that, because it is a significant challenge. My old report is a good news report. I was really fortunate in January to bring Katie Mayble to Sumption College to be honored as the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association Scholar for West Boston Public Schools. Chris and I brought her over to the University of Massachusetts Center at Sumption College to look at beautiful all of them for a lovely lunch. And you can read all about Katie's achievements there. She truly is a remarkable student, you know, the future is bright for her, and West Boston is a place where she really thrives, as we're doing. I think we just hear that story over and over again from our kids here, and as you see there, you know, their opportunities, qualities showing up on their pockets every day, it just really tells a story about what the opportunities for these kids are when they leave here. The other thing I want to point out, we're always working on curriculum here, sometimes it's little tweaks, sometimes it's larger tweaks. This is the second year I've been working with the physical education, I think we've been on Monday. They did a lot of work on their curriculum last year, and they have a lot of their work already in our School Brains system, so that it's sort of in perpetuity, and that's what we're trying to, try and do through this process. But they are gonna make some additional tweaks to their curriculum. They're excited to be getting some new neighborhood facilities so that they can start to work those into their plan of how they use their time with students, and how students get access to those materials, those machines when they're here. We were asked this year, once again, to be a NAEP testing site. It's not optional. It's testing, we don't really get the results. We're not identified, we don't get school-based results, we don't get individual students' results, but our results from our students compare to the Massachusetts NAEP results, which have historically been pretty terrific. The test was given on February 9th, last Friday. Supposed to be given on the 8th, we had it delayed start, so we took it on the 9th. And you don't see those results as individuals, but if you're curious, who can bring in the NAEP results, I think we do for Massachusetts. And I do have one action item for you tonight, and that is related to the memorandum of understanding with the London Public Schools, the CTEI. I've been in touch with Superintendent there, Paula Ledger, she's bringing it to her school committee at their, one of their February meetings. And the agreement has not changed from last year, except that the amount listed there is the current tuition rate, which is $10,786 per student. That rate will change when the commissioner sets it for the FY19 school year, and we'll pay them whatever the commissioner sets for the FY19 school year. But we usually approve the memo with the old amount and noting that we will adjust it when the new amount comes in. No other language has changed, and she doesn't anticipate any problems with her committee passing it, and I would ask to just bring it over to that tonight, so that she and I can decide.
Can I get a motion to approve memorandum of agreement with Lomester CTEI?
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum with Lomester CTEI.
Second.
I would just note that as I was reading through it, it just does specify now that it'll be ninth and 10th grade for next year.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, then we can move on to school committee updates. So, Mr. Montaselli?
Dr. Shoppa, I'm interested to see how our current West Boston students that are enrolled in the Lomester CTEI program, how are they doing? Are you in contact with them at all?
We have anecdotal, so we send a bus driving with them every day, and we hear from their parents, and we hear that they like it, and we've heard that they're doing very well. The director of CTEI says that they're great, they're well-integrated, he enjoys having them, and they all seem to be flourishing. We don't have any goal plan to survey them or anything, but we could certainly think about doing that. I think we should give it the year, though, let them finish the year, and then find out how they're doing. From every anecdotal report that we get, and like I say, we have a staff member in contact with them every day, every anecdotal report says they're doing well.
One of the nice things, Jason, was when this year's eighth graders went to visit, the West Boston students were the tour leaders, and so they got to interact with the kids and talk to them about how much they're enjoying it, and the kids did seem very truly happy and well-adjusted, so.
How many kids went over?
We brought 12 kids.
Yeah? Good.
How does that compare with the kids that were going to Aspen?
We don't have any numbers of that.
No, I meant previous years.
Yeah, we don't ask them, they won't share the numbers of our students. And they do pick them up here.
So, there's the difference there. So, it's a part of it.
That's one of the differences here.
Do you have anything else? So do I, so I'll take our motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Give you a second.
Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sheri didn't talk, we'll be out of here at 8 o'clock.